All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning commission for the city of Helena. Today is April 12th. Thank you all for joining. I understand we have a hybrid meeting tonight. So we've got some folks in person. We've got a bunch online as well. I appreciate you all being here with us, however you are joining us. My name is Rebecca Harbage. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Commission. And we, for the record, we do have a quorum of four zoning commissioners here with us tonight. April, is there a video for the folks online? Okay, great. For a little bit of background on the zoning commission, if you're not familiar with what we do, we are typically a five-member board. We require that there are four members or a majority for a quorum. So like I said, we have four tonight. If you're not familiar with our work, we follow an agenda and we will put that up on the screen when it's time. The way that the agenda works is we will hear each of the different proposals tonight. We have two. We'll hear those one at a time. We start with a staff presentation on each one, which is a summary of the proposal and then a staff report. The commission can then ask questions of staff as those come up. And next, the applicant will have an invitation to come up and speak to their proposal if they wish. It's not required, but if you'd like to speak on it, please do feel welcome. They can add any additional information that they might, that might have been missed or that they feel might be pertinent to our discussion. Other individuals who wish to speak on the proposals will then be welcome to offer their comments. So we will have a public comment portion for each of the proposals before us tonight. We will then, as a commission, discuss the proposal and have a motion second and vote. And just for the record and to clarify, this zoning commission is an advisory board to the city commission. So the recommendations we make tonight then go to the city commission for a final vote. And I think it looks like the first item on our agenda is our minutes, approving the minutes. So those for the commissioners, those were in our packets that were mailed out. Are there any comments or edits, updates to the minutes?
No.
Okay, not hearing any. I will go ahead and say that the minutes are approved as written. We did not have any conversation or edits on those. And we'll move forward into our regular items, which are the public hearings. So item number one tonight, we have the windbag proposal. And I believe, Michael, you will give us a staff report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Harbage and Commissioners. Sorry, just one moment. Not seeing the right screen to share. It's not giving me the option to show the, share the presenter's screen.
Bear with us, folks. This is our first hybrid meeting as a zoning commission, so we appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Item number one tonight is the windbag saloon conditional use permit. I am Michael Alvarez. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we are going to consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow casino use in the downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel 22 of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original townsite of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana and Lot 23A on amended plat of Lot 23 of the first subdivision of the last chance revision. They're just seeing this?
To the slideshow on this one. Sorry.
Also, all right, let's try that again. This is item one. It's the windbag saloon conditional use permit. Again, I'm Michael Alvarez and I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. We are going to consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to the aforementioned parcel for the windbag casino. They are located in the downtown zoning district. This property is generally located on the walking mall. It's on the east side of South Last Chance Gulch, south of West Broadway Street, in between their current windbag saloon and the Montana State Government Building there and Lasso the Moon Toy Store. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow casino use in the downtown zoning district. The applicant currently has the use type of tavern. Applicant is looking to expand into the recently vacated space next door, the former ghost art gallery. They have already purchased that space and are putting a bar in there that is separate from the conditional use permit, which is focused on the casino use. In that additional space, the applicant would like to add the bar lounge and a gaming area with more than six machines into the rear of that space. More than six machines changes that use type to casino. Per the requirements of the downtown district, conditional use permit is required for that casino use. So a casino is an establishment licensed for on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages. It's licensed for six or more video gaming machines or gambling devices. And it is also licensed to have live card games, Calcutta Pool, card tournaments and Keno. The intent of the downtown district is to develop a diverse, dynamic and desirable city environment. So I want to pause here on the concept drawing. This one shows the existing windbag saloon. It shows the expanded area in pink where the new windbag bar will go. I'm going to pause here just because the gaming area in the rear, it is one of the recommended conditions is that the gaming machines be limited to that area. So I want to get everybody a nice visual of that. It's about 500 square feet. Here's a view from the outside on the walking mall as rendered by the architect, who is in attendance tonight and will be presenting. Here's inside the entry door, looking towards the gaming machine room and the game room. So the evaluation is conducted by Title 11, Chapter 3, Section 4. Section A are the standards that need to be met, 1 and 2. Section B are the factors used to determine whether the standards in Section A are met. And I want to direct everybody's attention to number 12 there. That is express public opinion related to factors identified above. And that's basically, we go back through the factors, 1 through 11, through the lens of public comment. Section C informs us that any adverse impact on the standards of Section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. So our findings, much of the public commenters that we got regarded the walking mall as family friendly and that a change in use from the art gallery to casino for the space would influence character in the area. This drove a recommendation attached for tonight that no casino signage be placed on the outside and no machines be made visible from the mall. I'll be going back over the conditions and the specific way that they're written at the end. Conformity of the proposed use with the neighborhood plan, if one has been adopted. This one regard, brought on a recommendation to restrict devoted table games to the former art gallery space. Whether the proposal meets the zoning dimensional standards requirements for the zoning district without the need for variance, this project is not requiring any variances. And then noise from gaming machines being disruptive to patrons in adjacent business. This drove a recommendation that gaming machines should not be able to be heard from within adjacent buildings by occupant shopping and typically standing as close as like two feet from a wall. So, and then again, many of these factors were driven by the express public opinion that is attached to your packets and available online. So tonight's meeting was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighborhood notices had, were mailed to adjacent property owners and a sign was placed on the premise. An earlier proposal was likewise noticed in the Helena IR, had neighbor notices mailed and had a sign placed on the premises before the applicant withdrew that proposal to consider public comment, conduct public outreach and revise their proposal. So the proposal that you're seeing tonight was already revised with a first round of comments considered. Public comment collected for both proposals is included in your packet or sent as an addendum attachment via email. If it arrived after the packet materials were assembled, you all got those emails. The response has all been in opposition, save for one comment received today that was sent on, forwarded to you. So SAP's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow casino use in the downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel 22 of the first subdivision of last chance revision of a portion of the original townsite of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana and Lot 23A as shown on amended plat of Lot 23 of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original townsite of Helena, Montana, as shown on the amended plat filed under document 443830B, records of Lewis and Clowney, Clark County, Montana. With the conditions that, one, gambling machines be restricted to the gaming areas defined in the site plan, submitted and not visible from the walking mall, save for the existing sportsbook machine located at the entrance of the original windbag saloon. Two, that devoted table games be restricted to the former ghost art gallery space at 21 South Last Chance Gulch. Three, gaming machines volume be reduced to a level so that they cannot be heard of standing on the walking mall or in adjacent buildings of standing two feet away from the wall inside that space. Four, the word casino not be used in signage on the face of the building. Five, a no smoking sign be placed near the entrance of the casino on the outside of the building. And six, all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per Section 1135B of Helena City Code. Questions for staff, please?
Thank you, Michael. Are there any questions for staff?
Would you mind going one slide back so we can review? Yes, to stay there. Thank you.
So, Michael, my question is on number two. That devoted table games be restricted to the former ghost art gallery space. So I understand with one, the machines are going to be in the back. What does devoted table games mean? And is that use going to be allowed all the way up into the front and visible from the street?
Yes. So the intention is to keep the machines restricted, that gaming area. As presented, these plans don't have devoted gaming tables in the front. I did want to build in that flexibility for if the space was to evolve over time. I wanted to keep the entire windbag saloon from being able to be turned into card games, but I wanted to allow for some flexibility in the future.
And that would be, as I understand it, similar to the room in the Rialto that's got card tables to the, I guess that's south of the main bar section?
Not actually familiar with the Rialto.
I think so.
All right.
But I guess just to clarify, that's not included in the proposal as it was presented. That's just potential future use.
Correct. Yeah.
Are there other questions from the commission for staff?
Actually, let me, if I can ask a follow-up. So in going to a casino designation, and maybe you had it in here, casino designation by definition would include both the machines and the gaming tables. Is that correct?
Correct.
But at this point, their application, they're not asking for, they're not specifying that they're going to use gaming tables.
Correct. It's not specified.
Okay. But once this CUP is approved, they are a subsequent owner could do that.
Correct. Yeah.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Given the shared wall space, I believe, is it expected that the neighboring tenant will be able to hear the gaming machines from their side of the wall?
It's not, I, it's not expected. These are old buildings with fairly solid walls, but I did want to build that in there just in case. It also prohibits it being heard from the walking mall, if that's the standard that's being applied.
Are there questions for staff? I have one. So I know, I see that condition four says that the word casino will not be used in signage on the face of the building. And I guess my question on that, I know I saw that that was part of the application that the applicant had said that they would not put the words casino out there. My question relates to our ability to regulate the content of a sign. Are we allowed to say that you cannot say casino?
That's a good question. Since it was part of the application, we may want to look at how we word that condition and perhaps say, to be consistent with the application that they have proposed not including the word, instead of us saying, you can't say it. It's, we're holding you to what you say you're going to do.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that would apply either, but I think that might be a better.
Okay, thank you. That might be one that we just want to check with the city attorney. And I guess another piece that I was thinking of was I read through the staff report. You know, it's mentioned, it's mentioned that city staff would, let's see. I'm not finding the exact. Maybe this was in the application, in the applicant's materials, talking about flashing lights on the outside of the building, but I didn't see anything about lighting in the conditions. Is that, was that something that you considered as a condition or not?
Yes, it is. So it's going to be under glare. After reviewing that, essentially, the downtown signage standards are covering all of that. They don't allow for exposed bulbs. They don't allow for illuminated. Much of this stuff would not be permitted anyway by the downtown sign code. It was as restrictive as anything we had been contemplating.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Go ahead.
So, Michael, as you know, lots of the comments talked about infrastructure in that block of the walking mall, so the Running Creek, the trolley as, you know, attracting families, attracting young kids. And then also the library and then the park up the street. Are those uses, those public uses, are those public uses recognized as part of the downtown plan or not protected, but somehow recognized or acknowledged as features of downtown that the city puts a value in?
Yeah, for sure. They most definitely are. The downtown as a whole and with the walking mall as a centerpiece is considered, I'm going to forget the exact wording, but essentially the face of the city. And the downtown neighborhood plan asks that the city consider the downtown area as the face of the city and what we project outwards to visitors. I worry that I'm not accurately using the exact lines from the downtown neighborhood plan, but it is essentially supposed to be viewed as our calling card. With that respect, there are other casinos, for instance, at the Rialto that have many children playing in front of it with like the newspaper boy and things like that. While we certainly don't want to be advertising based on public comment, the face of the city as a city of casinos, I thought that was already fairly well restricted with the restrictions on signage and placement of the machines. Thanks.
I have one more question, and if you're not able to answer this, I can also ask the applicant later. But I am thinking back to last summer and I believe that there were, maybe the city had approved some consumption of alcoholic beverages outside of the windbag on the trolley area. I don't know if that was something that was approved or that was unofficial, but I definitely remember seeing people waiting for their tables, I think, with beverages outside on the trolley. Do you know if that was something official that the city approved or not?
Summer of 2021?
I think so. Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, fair enough.
Was that related to the Pride weekend, perhaps?
I don't think so. I was wondering if it was something that had been approved similar to other bars on the walking mall that were drinking outside.
I do believe that was related to Pride Week.
It was. Okay. Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Those I do. If the effects of these conditions, such as a no smoking sign, prove to be ineffective, then law enforcement? I guess that's my question. I mean, you can put a no smoking sign out, but I mean, I guess you could say that for anything. I'm just curious how that would work when you approve conditional use. I mean, in this case, that would mean responsibility of the applicant is done. They put their sign up. But if customers are being bad actors, at what point is it an issue with the fact that we've given a conditional use permit?
Commissioner, I appreciate the question. And I'm glad we have an audience for this. Smoking on the walking mall is not prevented already. So it is already an enforcement issue. We are looking for this sign to reinforce what we already have, the rule that we already have. So we're hoping this actually reinforces things by adding another no smoking sign to the walking mall. But it is still a matter of enforcement. If you're asking whether or not we are trying to put the windbag on the hook for their customers, I don't know how we would go about that.
No, I wouldn't expect that, I guess. I suppose this is a condition to reinforce with the assumption that, I suppose there is an assumption then that adding a casino will perhaps contribute to the smoking problem on the walking mall. Otherwise, there wouldn't be a condition in the conditional use to add a no smoking sign to the walking mall outside of this establishment, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, the no smoking sign, if has no effect, I'm just curious if there's any recourse.
Oh, I see. To see whether or not we need to limit these conditions to something that is enforceable. We can enforce whether or not they have a sign on there. We can't really tie to a conditional use permit the activities of patrons. And so I'm not going to have a satisfying answer, I think, for you. We can, we can ask for a sign. I suppose we could ask for them to, you know, have a bouncer or something that's enforcing it, but that does seem onerous. So.
I think maybe something similar would be the situation with the Sapphire Bar, where that, it became apparent, it seemed that that was, there were some bad actors who were probably patrons at the Sapphire Bar, and I think they had permission to use that outdoor space that I believe the city then took away because it was being abused. So I guess maybe, I think what we want to avoid is a situation where we approve something that ends up because of the patrons being seen as more of a blight on the walking mall. And then is there, would it be law enforcement at that point in terms of enforcing? You know, there were, there were comments submitted talking about, I think, just drunk patrons of any bar probably have this issue, but vomit on stairs and things like that. So I think we just want to avoid getting into a situation where we're unintentionally adding to that by seeming to approve of that type of behavior on the walking mall.
Certainly. Yeah. So the windbag saloon is already a tavern. They've already purchased that space. They're already moving a bar into it. When setting these conditions, it was really hard, and they're permitted to do that by right. When setting these conditions came about, it was very hard to separate these things that are permitted by right, the bar use, which is, you know, alcohol and what we would associate most of this negative behavior that was cited in public comment. It was really hard to distinguish the bar use from the casino use and what would be driving these sorts of things. So that was just something that, a line we were trying to toe and, you know, certainly we're here for your feedback on it.
I have one more question. On the definition of casino in state or in city code with the five machine threshold, five machines being a tavern and then anything six or more being casino, is that based on state law or is that a city determined threshold city? I'm seeing some comments from the peanut gallery that suggest that it is a city definition. Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, someone could look it up.
I'd like to.
Thank you.
I'd like to revisit that.
Because I think a lot, at least when I think about this application, a lot of my waffling on one side or the other goes back to what's the impact of five machines versus the impact of six machines? And so I think that threshold for me is really important when we think about, should they be allowed? And so I think that threshold for me is really important when we think about, should they be allowed to have six? Where they would be allowed to have five currently? So I'd like to know whether that's a city definition or state, because maybe the zoning commission could look into it in the future.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. I mean, without this CUP, there is a world where they are permitted by right to put five gaming machines in their window. And, you know, that is the flip side of this coin.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions?
So does the existing, not the new part, the existing windbag have five machines? Do I understand that correctly?
It does not. It has a sports bet machine located in the front. The applicant, that's the only one that I'm aware of from my visits, but.
Does that count as gaming, as a gaming machine or not? I don't know what that is.
That was, that is my impression. It's a machine for gambling.
But so with the the use by right, let's assume it's they could have five machines. Does that mean each side of the windbag could have five or just the two combined could have five?
It's, they're going to be sharing one license, so it would be it would be five total for both spaces.
But with and with the by right, there would be no or didn't wouldn't have to be any restrictions on the location. So those could be in the front of the in the front of the restaurant.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's correct. Thanks.
However, if we approved conditional use permit, just for clarification, they could still put five wherever they would like in the original windbag if they decided to one day.
No, it's it's under one license. So all of their gaming machines, except for the existing one that is allowed to remain where the sportsbook machine, that's allowed to remain where it is in the existing place. But all the all of the gaming machines would be restricted to the gaming area with the conditional use permit. So they are not going to have the tavern designation anymore. They are going to be a casino and all of their machines are going, both sides are going to be the casino. So all of their gaming machines would be regulate relegated to the gaming area, except for the sportsbook.
Any other questions from the commission? I don't see any. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
I think with that, we can invite the applicant or applicant's representative to come up and speak. And just for the record, when you come up, if you would just identify yourself by name and address prior to speaking, thank you.
My name is Ben. Let's see, I need a green button. There we go. My name is Ben Tintinger. I'm with Mosaic Architecture and representing the owner of the windbag on this project. I am going to open up something here and see if I can share it. So.
I think that's your other slide, too. It looks like you have the Helena first.
Sorry. I'm looking for the. Okay, I got the right one then. Okay, good. All right. I'm going to go to interview. Say that again. There we go. All right. Well, thanks for having us here tonight. This project, I'm going to give you a little history of it. It's it's been an interesting ride so far. I think naively, we submitted this a couple of months ago with the designation of having it be a casino, even though that wasn't really the intent to be a casino. It was simply to have gaming machines in the restaurant. And so it was with a little bit of a surprise that we we started getting quite a bit of negative feedback on this. And it goes back to this whole idea or connotation of what a casino is and how it's defined by the city of Helena. In my mind, a casino is something that that is their main business plan, that you are, your business is runoff of gambling versus what we see around town at the Silver Star or the Brew House or or lots of other places that do have gaming machines in on premise. The intent of this project was to create a new bar, to create a really nice lounge type bar that had a really upscale feeling to it, kind of like a speakeasy, I guess, in a way. And include the gaming machines as part of this, similar to the Silver Star. And I suppose if you've been in the Silver Star, you may have noticed in the back of the bar, they have an area that's that includes those machines. The Brew House downstairs does as well. So I don't think, for the most part, people would consider those establishments as casinos. And even if we were stretching that a little bit, maybe the Rialto wouldn't be necessarily considered a casino. It has been a bar for a long time. So that terminology of casino, it obviously sparked a lot of emotion, a lot of people coming to the table. So we rescinded that smittle based on that comment and said, okay, let's look at this from a design perspective and see what folks are up in arms about and what we can do to mitigate those concerns. And so we went back to the table and we met with the folks next door at Last Sea of the Moon. I met with Sandy down at Birds and Beesley's and talked through the project and talked through what their concerns were. Now, a lot of their concerns have to do with the perception of the clientele. And you kind of mentioned sort of blighted customers, and that is certainly not the intent. Even the discussion on, you know, whether those customers smoke or not, I think, is is really taking it a step too far in this case. Maybe there's a lot of people that smoke when they're at casinos, but maybe they don't. And certainly, our state law and city ordinances don't allow smoking inside, so that's not going to happen. And the smoking that that would happen outside is not allowed either. It's it's really, you know, the bar customers that that may smoke and getting them to do that in an appropriate location. So we did revisit our proposal and through the owner, Matt Schmeckel, came, kind of defined the intent of this project and said, okay, what are you willing to live with? And so that's where some of the things that we suggested in terms of the conditions came from. We we actually had rescinded that original proposal because one of the conditions was you can't open up this side of the bar until six o'clock. Well, that just that really affects an owner's business plan when you can't have your your space open until six o'clock. That doesn't make a lot of sense. So we said, okay, what what is it that's causing that to be a possible condition? And what are the things that we can do to mitigate that? And so those things that we looked at, we originally had a few machines that were up in the front of the bar. We said, okay, let's take those machines out. We'll put everything in the back. Right now, they're showing a total of, what is that, 15 machines? But that's just a plan trying to max out what you could put in the back room. I don't think Matt's intention is to start off with that many, but you could have that many. They are in the back of the space, the gaming machines. I don't know if you spend much time around them. I'm not a gamer necessarily, but, you know, I can, I'll go to the Rialto. I'll go to the Silver Star. They don't make noise unless you want them to make noise. If you've been to Las Vegas, they make noise because that's their intention. Here, they won't. The the volume will be down. It's not an issue. So again, we we looked at this plan and said, okay, what can we do besides putting the machines in the back? The other thought was was not having the signage out front and not being, not advertising it as a place to come gamble. This is going to be a place to come have a nice drink, to do possibly get some food from the windbag, although it hasn't been decided at this point that that they'll allow food on this side. You can see from the images that the idea is to create a fairly upscale place. This is an image from the entry. As you're looking from the mall, you can't see gaming machines. You can't see gambling. Now, the other one point I want to make is with the card tables, there's no intention to have card tables in front here either. I think it was brought up that, well, maybe a potential owner down the road could have card tables, but I'm guessing Matt would say, as as the owner would say, no, our intention is to have it in the back and leave that area. As you come into the bar, this is what you see. Again, it's a lounge type bar. One of the things that'll change in this image is we're actually bringing the old windbag bar back bar. It's being refinished and will be used in this space. As you go further back in the space, this is a view. If you're standing all the way back at the entrance to the gaming, looking back out towards the walking mall, you can see that, again, it's, you know, fairly friendly, comfortable place to be. And then last, well, not lastly, but this image is actually at the back of the bar, looking towards where the gaming is. And again, you can't, you still can't see where the gaming is, even from the back of the bar inside. And then lastly, this is just an image in that back room where the games are. So the gaming part of this is is a supplemental income for the windbag. It is not part of the overall major business plan. It's not the focus of this by any means. The exterior is going to be kept pretty much the same as it is, other than some signage that will happen out here and and the windows in the upper get replaced similar to the windbag. So I think, you know, again, there was a lot of negative comment. A lot of that had to do with it being family friendly. I don't know if you all were out last Friday night when it was 75 degrees and on the walking mall, but 10 Mile, the Hawthorne, the Rialto and the ice cream shop were all open and spilling out on the mall. And there must have been 400 people there and a ton of families. There were kids everywhere, and it was it was like a community event. In fact, a number of people asked me, what's going on tonight? What event? No event. This is just, you know, a nice night, and that's where families were hanging out. I jokingly told my wife, the guys in gambling at the Rialto had to come out and tell the families to be quiet. So so I think this is going to be a good addition to the walking mall. It's going to be a classy place. It's not going to have that casino feel to it. So it's going to help downtown, and it is in keeping with the downtown vision and the idea of of bringing tourists in, of of having more people, having more restaurants, having more breweries and bars and that kind of thing, gift shops and retail that will follow when you bring people down. People attract people. If we can have people that are here enjoying a dinner and drink or a gaming machine, it's going to attract other people, just like it does on the lower part of the walking mall. So with that, I'll leave it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Yeah, go ahead.
Do you, so you're saying that the operating hours of Nextdoor Windbag will match those of the Windbag currently is the plan, is the?
That's the plan, yeah, intent. In the plan, let me get to that real quick. This pass through here is just a saloon door, so it's open bottom and top. So whenever one side's open, the other side's got to be open. There's no intention right now to to separate them.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kim.
I assume with the soundproofing issue, even with the fact that I think the windbag, the existing windbag has a completely can have a completely open front. But I assume that this pass through door, between the pass through door and the location of the gaming machines, you're you're far enough off the street that that's not going to carry over into the out onto the sidewalk.
Right. This doesn't have the overall, the overhead doors like the windbag does. I imagine this door might be on a great summer day, be blocked open, and people can come in and out. But it's it's far enough removed in the back that, one, you won't hear the machines for sure. And two, you're you're not going to see them from the street.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
We appreciate all the images that you included in the resmittle. I think they did a great job of showing what the inside of that is going to look like. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do have one one more question. So you mentioned that the intent was not to have a like be a casino, right? So I guess, just out of curiosity, is this a project that would move forward without the machines?
The project is under construction right now. It's been issued a building permit and it is under construction. I think Michael said it pretty well, that by right, this can be a bar and it can have five machines. And those five machines can be located anywhere on the premise that that you know, the owner wants to put them. So, yeah, it's it's moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. I don't see any. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the public portion of the hearing. And I will invite the public to speak or comment. Now, we have a lot of folks online and a few in the room. Maybe we'll start with folks in the room. If there's anyone in attendance who wishes to speak, would you please come up and introduce yourself with your name and address?
Should I stand or sit? Is this one working? Okay. My name is Amy Barrett. I live at 518 North Davis in Helena. My daughter and I own Last Sea of the Moon, the toy store on the trolley block next door to the proposed casino. As the owner of a business that serves children and families, I strongly oppose permitting a casino right next door. Our downtown walking mall was created to be the premier pedestrian-friendly shopping district. The loss of two beloved 40-plus-year-old retail businesses on our block in the last four months, and the thought that they will be placed with be replaced with yet more alcohol and gambling-driven driven establishments is really discouraging. Our business is devoted to the health and welfare of our youngest and most impressionable children, citizens. The addictive nature of alcohol and gambling is very troubling, and the safety and family-friendly aspect of our block will surely be affected if a casino is allowed. We already regularly have to deal with smoking, which came up. We already regularly have to deal with smoking, which came up, I just realized it was banned, but apparently, there used to be the smoking containers right in front of the windbag, so it was definitely, um, a problem to our store. Uh, I'm glad to know that it, it is banned and that there will be more signage, uh, because that is really an issue. Uh, as well as patrons who send their unaccompanied children to the toy store to play while they wait for their food or eat and drink. That's a real problem to us. Since the windbag changed ownership, we've seen increased vomit on the sidewalk and the staircase that leads to the toy store, as well as undesirable behavior in our store from people who tell us that they have just come from the windbag. We can't control people's behavior, but it is an issue. Nearly every day, tourists and locals ask me, why are so many, why are there so many empty or underutilized ground floor spaces on the walking mall? We are forfeiting untold potential revenue by not filling our ground floor spaces with high foot traffic, unique businesses. Now's the time for our community and officials to direct and facilitate the vision stated in the downtown Helena master plan, making our walking mall and downtown corridor a destination for locals and visitors with vibrant shops, galleries, restaurants, et cetera, on the ground floor and offices and residences on the upper floors. I'd like to ask about the requirements of a casino being near a church. The windows, the windbags application states the nearest church is on Ewing Street. But there is actually, um, Grace Community Fellowship that meets in the Dunphy Building across the walking mall and less than 300 feet from the proposed casino. There's also, uh, the daycare, um, Head Start daycare, um, right past the library, which is, I don't know how many feet. But those two things are a concern to me that the, um, daycare particularly, uh, brings their children down regularly and especially in the summer. I see absolutely no benefit to our community by allowing the windbag to expand gambling on the walking mall. Please vote against this detrimental enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here in the room who wishes to speak on this proposal? Please state your name and address for the reference.
Savannah Barrett, 25 South Last Chance Gulch. We are here because conditional use permits require discretionary approval from the city. The city commission has no obligation to approve the request for a casino on the trolley block next to a toy store, a church, a dentist, the library, and ironically, an addiction counseling center. I am here asking for your discretion. Please consider the voices speaking out against this. Local business owners have spoken in opposition. People who live in downtown Helena have spoken in opposition and we need to think long-term about what is best for our community and our future generations. Modern casino gambling is computer gambling. The typical casino gambler sits at a computer screen, enters a credit card and enters a digital environment, carefully constructed to keep them playing until all their available money has been extracted. Small wins are administered at the most psychologically effective intervals, but the math is remorseless. The longer you play, the more you lose. A casino targets those who can least afford to lose and earns most of its living from people for whom gambling has become an addiction. When New Jersey allowed casinos into Atlantic City, casino advocates promised that gambling would revive the town's fading economy. But merchants who expected foot traffic to return to the city's main street were sorely disappointed. That money, the money that comes into casinos stays in the casinos. Liquor stores and cash for gold outlets now line the city's once premier retail strip. The impact of casinos on local property values is unambiguously negative, according to the National Association of Realtors. Casinos do not revive local economies. They act as parasites upon them. Community, communities located within 10 miles of a casino exhibit double the rate of problem gambling. Unsurprisingly, such communities also suffer higher rates of home foreclosure and other forms of economic distress and domestic violence. Casinos do not provide jobs or offer any service to the community. Casinos give nothing back to the community except debt and addiction. Is this what we want to promote in Helena's most unique shopping area? By allowing a casino, we allow the growth from an industry that consciously exploits the predictable weakness of the most vulnerable people. Once the space is allowed to operate as a casino, it will always be zoned for casino use, I believe. This would be an irrevocable damage to downtown Helena. Please say no to the proposed windbag casino. Please help us keep our community healthy. Please help us keep the businesses who provide real services in business and help the walking mall flourish as a shopping and dining destination. Thank you for the discretion and your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Matt Schmeckel and, uh, I'm the applicant. Um, Ben really did a good job speaking on my behalf, but I just wanted to add that, you know, obviously as the applicant, I support the approval of the, um, proposal. Um, I think that when we initially submitted, um, we received a lot of feedback and really did our best to take all of that into account and modified our plan, um, in a really thoughtful way to mitigate a lot of those concerns. And we did that because, um, you know, in many cases, going beyond what was truly required of us, like both in terms of lighting and in terms of signage. And that is because it is really our intention to be, um, good actors within the community. It is our intention to have a bright, diverse, vibrant, um, downtown walking mall community. And we really do want to be a part of that. Um, and you know, if approved, we would absolutely hold ourselves to a high standard and, would look to, you know, enforce the smoking, uh, the no smoking policy, um, you know, very aggressively. Uh, do our best to minimize any sort of public intoxication. Um, and you know, just go above and beyond to make sure that, um, we hold ourselves to a standard that is, you know, representative of what, um, I think you guys and the rest of the community would like to see, um, from an applicant. So, um, please consider our requests. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Chair Harbage, members of the commission. I live in, work in, oh, sorry. My name is Angie Wagenhals and my address is 332 South Park. I live and work in downtown Helena and here today to support the proposal. The windbag has been a fantastic addition to the walking mall and the planned expansion would offer more options for those of us that want to spend our time and our money at downtown businesses. I would love to have more to convince my friends that live in other Montana cities that Helena has plenty to offer young professionals. And I love the look of the new and more upscale bar. Um, much like the Rialto's location next to the Big Dipper, a diverse range of businesses and opportunities for those that live in the area is the driver of a busy downtown that all of us live and work in the area can enjoy. And for what it's worth, what I've seen in the comments and in some of the questions seems to unfairly associate gambling with bad behavior. I'm sure many of us have enjoyed the recent March Madness brackets and have managed to handle our gambling with our activities on the walking mall and I'd encourage you to support this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room who wishes to comment on this proposal? Not seeing any, so we will move to online. And I think, April, how do you, do you have hands raised already?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so first we will hear from Matt Peterson.
Great, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Matt Peterson. My address is 309 Holter Street here in Helena.
Excuse me, Matt?
Matt?
We're not, we're not able to hear you very well.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
We're going to try to move them.
I'm, I'm going to try to move my microphone closer to, closer to the output. So just a moment. Okay, try now.
Sure. Can you guys hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. Um, my address is 309 Holter Street here in downtown Helena. And one of the most attractive parts about living near the downtown is being able to walk places, you know, walk places to meet people, to meet friends, um, you know, to socialize and get out and, uh, just mingle with people. And this new classy, high-end bar, I think does that. Um, the proposal, um, takes into account the concerns of the people in the walking mall, which are valid. Um, it's a tough time for retail and, you know, I feel for them. Um, but I'd just like to, again, reiterate my support. Thanks.
Thank you.
So now I have WJ Wagon.
Just as a reminder, folks online, if you can please just state your name and address before speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, this is Walt Wagenhals. I'm at 1545 Williamsburg Road in Helena. Um, uh, here in the commentary on this so far and the presentation by the architect, it reinforces my, uh, impression that this is a worthy project, uh, deserving of, of the support of the entire community. The way I see it, there's two elements to this. One is the legitimate business concerns that, uh, windbag management is, is exercising in their development. And, uh, in my view, this is a, uh, the, the casino or the gaming aspect is a minor element of this expansion. Um, and I think it's reflected in, uh, the design and the adjustments that have been made to accommodate some of the concerns and comments that, that preceded this hearing. So there's, there's that, the, the payoff on the business side for me is pretty clear. You've got, you know, payoff to the, to this business and payout to the clientele that, that game and win. And not all gamers are addicted and perpetual, um, you know, slaves to their addictions. It's, it's a pastime. If you go anywhere in Montana, there's mom and pop bars along the way that have, uh, electronic gaming built into their, their bar restaurant, you know, family-centered, um, businesses. So that, that aspect to me needs to be put in perspective here too. The, the other component, of course, is the, the contribution to the city, uh, tax funds. That's, that's going to be a payoff, uh, on the business side. So I think those elements, uh, speak for themselves. The other side that I'm hearing and is in my own sense legitimate grounds for support is the aesthetic and atmospheric elements of this expansion. The windbag in its, in, under its management, since the remodel has, I think, gone above and beyond to, uh, adapt and uphold the, the, the historical spirit of downtown Helena and the walking mall in particular. And I have no reason to believe that that would be any different with the expansion. And in fact, it seems that the management is going, uh, a step further in trying to, um, enhance that atmosphere that is such a draw to people. The, the Helena mystique of the mining community and all its, its storied past is a draw for people. And I think the windbag management has, uh, tuned into that and has brought that forward as a, as an attractive feature, um, for the entire area. So those elements to me are the primary, um, basis for recommending approval of this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. April, before we go on to the next person, is there any way we can turn the volume up? That's it. Okay.
We, we could have switched to a webinar today, but the, we had already published the Zoom link, so there was no way to change it to make it a bit more technologically.
Okay.
Friendly.
No problem. Thank you.
No problem. So now we have Kevin Ward.
Hello, my name is Kevin Ward, K E V I N W A R D. I live at 518 Breckenridge. Um, I would just like to comment about my support for the changes at the windbag. Um, I've lived in Helena for 30 years and I have noticed a distinct, uh, resistance to change, uh, that the city or the small minority in the city has. Um, and I think about the changes that happened during the COVID-19 pandemic that allowed for, uh, businesses like the Hawthorne and the Rialto and the 10 Mile to have, uh, drinks outside on their patios and outside on the walking mall. And I think about what the architect said about, you know, last Friday or Saturday or whatever it was, where there was 400 people downtown. And I know that there was similar, uh, reaction, similar resistance to change. Um, and I don't think many of us can argue with the importance of having more people shopping at businesses, going to businesses and being part of businesses. Uh, from what I've heard in this presentation, the owner of the windbag and the architects, uh, involved with this process have taken into consideration the needs and desires of other businesses around them and have tried to mitigate, uh, any of those concerns. So I would sort of voice my full approval of this going forward and, uh, really offering another space on the wind or on the walking mall. I have to say, I'd like to have the opportunity to go to the windbag and if there's more space, maybe I won't have to wait for an hour in line, which is apparently what it is right now. So, uh, I think that would be a great help. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Now we have Laura Gerlach.
Hi, I'm Laura Gerlach. I live at 528 North Warren, also known as the Cathedral Vista. Um, I am responding mostly to the presenter who mentioned how wonderful it was to see the 400 or so amount of people, families on the walking mall and how wonderful. I'm sorry I missed it. It was that fleeting moment of 75 degree weather. But I'm wondering how will this casino designation foster that family environment? Listening to the experiences of the Last of the Moon, what they have to deal with being next door neighbors already before that designation, the high standards that you're going to have. Well, you can't guarantee the standards of your clientele. And we see this time and time again in Helena. And so I would like to express my, um, lack of support for the casino designation. And that's all.
Great. Thank you very much.
And next we have Scott Harris.
Hi, my name is Scott Harris. I'm at 1050 East Los, East Helena. I strongly support the casino designation as a casino does not draw more people that consume alcohol versus a bar. So there are people that are participating in a, uh, an activity of their own accord and they're not imbibing in great, uh, extra amounts of alcohol like a, a bar, uh, that type of atmosphere does. So casino is, is truly an environment for, um, one person to enjoy their time doing that. The alcohol's not the effect and that shouldn't be the effect on the, on the walking mall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Jake Brown.
Hello, uh, my name is Jake Brown. I, uh, live at, uh, 201 North Warren with, uh, my partner, just about three blocks away from, uh, the windbag. And I would just like to voice my support for this project in this, um, permit application. Um, my fiance and I, you know, we spend a lot of time walking up and down the walking mall when we're done with work, you know, getting a drink, eating dinner. I really do just think that this, um, this business is going to add a lot of richness to our community and especially to the walking mall and will hopefully attract other sort of young professionals like myself. Um, I would, just as one note, I think kind of in response to what some folks have said, you know, I would just urge that the city, I, I really, I strongly feel that the city should not approve or deny permits based off perceptions of perceived clientele, kind of like the architect said. I just think that that's sort of a slippery slope. And, um, so with that, I would just like to say I support this project, I support the permit and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next we have Colleen Martin.
Hi, thank you. My name is Colleen Martin. I live at 518 Breckenridge Street. Um, I am here in support of the proposed casino license to accompany the windbag, um, on the walking mall. I feel like the intention that the windbag has shown through thoughtful plans that take both feedback I feel like the intention that the Windbag has shown through thoughtful plans that take both feedback from the community into account while also trying to create a desirable place for young professionals to get together through a high end bar, you know, is deserving of a casino license as well. To me, the casino element is a part of the plan, but it is not the plan. For example, I know that when I or others in the Helena community think of dining at the Silver Star, I don't think of the handful of machines that are in the back of the restaurant. I think of the ambiance. I think of the the menu. I think of, you know, in a, a place that I'm excited to invite my friends to. So what I've seen in this presentation from both the proprietor of the Windbag and the architect is that the intent is there to expand their space to not primarily be a casino, but to be a needed and welcome bar on the walking mall as our community continues to grow and expand. I feel like we need to expand our business opportunities and our places for folks to congregate and hang out as well. And I think that this would be, you know, a fun and exciting addition from the business side of things. And I, and I, I frankly think that the casino is more of, of an afterthought than it is the, the sole main plan for this proposal. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Brandon De Mars.
Hi, my name is Brandon De Mars and I live at 415 and a half North Beatty Street. I just wanted to comment in favor of the conditional use permit for the, for the Windbag. You know, I think it's a good thing for downtown and the walking mall in particular to have more entertainment and nightlife options. Especially as someone who lives near downtown and spends a lot of time on the walking mall. I appreciate having, you know, options for entertainment that are walkable to me from my home, things I can do without having to drive across town. And I think having more options and more things in this vein is a positive development. So I would support the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Johnny.
All right. Thank you. My name's John Metropolis. I live at 759 South California Street in Helena, Montana. I'd just like to support the Windbag's proposal here. I think that the plans go, you know, they've demonstrated that they can have plans that make downtown kind of remember the past, but also look forward to a vibrant future for downtown Helena. I'd also just like to say that, you know, insinuating the clientele will be unsavory based on their, you know, desire to, you know, go into a casino is pretty shallow and prejudiced. And like somebody else said, you know, that's a pretty slippery slope. Profiling people based on their, you know, what they want to do for the past time, based on where they want to go. So I, you know, I, I really hope that we don't go down that road much further. I'd really like to support the opportunity for downtown Helena to grow and thrive. You know, we're adding more and more people, more and more people with different wants and desires for entertainment. And I think it's important that we grow with them. So again, just thanks for having me on and I'm here to support this.
Thank you.
So there are no more hands raised. However, in the chat, we have a comment from Rod, Rob Freestad. He says, why is the requirement for CUP necessary here? I wholeheartedly support the Windbag's expansion, but believe that our level of computer gambling has severely deteriorated our state over the years. And now there is one more raised hand. Jan Lombardi.
Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm Jan Lombardi and I live at 62 South Last Chance Gulch. So I actually reside very near the Windbag and I am very much a supporter of the Windbag. I think they've been a welcome addition to where we live and I support developments of downtown, but I have to express a concern. I, um, the lack of communication with me as a neighbor. I knew nothing. I, I heard literally a few days ago about an article in the paper and had to find out tonight through trial and error how to access this meeting. So I'm stepping in late. I'm hearing the conversation that's talking about a presentation, which I very much would have appreciated knowing what that presentation is. I'm hearing a lot of conversation too about the casino is minimal in a plan and you know, the need for more entertainment. I'm not somebody that equates casinos with entertainment. So I'm really, I wouldn't say that I'm absolutely opposed. I was initially and my husband and I sent a letter in the first time and I appreciated that the city asked for more information. And I believe I'd like more information, too. I want to understand a little bit more what this expansion means to me as someone who resides right near it. I want to make sure that the city has capacity to manage the growth. I see parking challenges already where I live. So I would just like to submit a comment of concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. April, are there any more hands raised?
There are no more hands raised.
Chair, Chair Harvage. Okay. Last chance, folks online. If you still wish to comment, please indicate so by raising your hand in Zoom. All right. It sounds like we have a baby in the room who wishes to comment. Okay. If there are no more people online who wish to comment, and I do not see anyone coming forward in the room, we will go ahead and close the public comment period for this proposal. And are there any final questions or considerations from the commission? Before we make a motion.
I would like to maybe bring up a consideration for commissioners to remind everyone that we are here to talk about the conditional use permit for the casino space, not for the Windbag's expansion with the lounge, which looks like an awesome development. And I think that's what a lot of the public comment has also been in favor for is the addition of this bar. And also it seems like some of the opposition has been about half as much the bar as the casino piece. So going back to our criteria about the zoning aspect and the conditional use part for the casino piece is what I'm hoping we can have our discussion on and what we make our decision on today. Rather than the lounge and the lounge facility, which is already something they are very well able to do tonight.
Any other questions or considerations the commission wants to bring up? If not, is there a motion that we can discuss?
I was waiting for that to come back up, but I move to not recommend approval of the resolution granting conditional use permit to allow a, I don't know if I need to say the whole thing, to allow a casino use in the downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel 22 of the first subdivision of last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena Lewis and Clark County, Montana and Lot 23. Can I stop there?
I think you can say with the conditions provided.
With, including the conditions provided, one through six.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think I'll second that.
Okay. There has been a motion and a second, so we can now discuss the motion to not recommend approval.
I can start.
Sure. Thank you.
So, um, I agree. I think the images, like I mentioned, are, paint an excellent picture of what this could look like and how it could bring people downtown. And I think that relates to the comments we have heard in favor. However, I don't think it's appropriate to allow a casino use in this location, also given the comment that we have heard. So I think both in this case can be achieved.
I would add, um, for me, I was really trying to think about the effects specifically of casinos rather than bars and what research is out there about their effects in regard to section 1134 with A2 adversely impact or impair the peaceful use of existing property or improvements in the vicinity. And it's a pretty difficult read. There's some conflicting results, but one thing that kind of came out was essentially that the adverse economic impacts of casinos are more likely to be seen in more dense urban and affluent areas in which the walking mall and the core core downtown of Helena, I think, would be the most adversely potentially impacted by casino use. So to me, if we can ever say no to a casino anywhere in Helena, it would be on the walking mall. And perhaps the most southern part of the last chance blocks of downtown for these reasons, as that is where our most highly concentrated or retail wall to wall shared space business district is. And so for me, I do think that the current plan is much improved from what I was before. And a lot of my worst concerns were mitigated, but I guess I'm just basing that off of, it's hard when we decided as a city to designate casino use as over five. If we say yes here, then how do we define casino use that is not appropriate in the future? Like if somebody else comes with 20, 30, 40. So where do we draw the line here? And for this, I'm going to say let's go with city code, which already exists. To me, this is the area in town that could be most negatively impacted by this type of use. So that's where I'm coming from.
Any other discussion? Sure.
So I'll jump in next and I'm, I'm actually quite torn on this one, more so than I thought I would be because I'm generally against casinos and so let me just go through some factors and that'll go into my decision. The other block of the walking mall, I mean, the concerns that we've heard are, you know, how does this impact families with children? How does this impact that ambiance of the walking mall? I'm, I think Mr. Tintinger made a good point when talking about last Friday night and the hundreds of people on the other block of the walking mall. It's notable that the casino in the Rialto on that walking mall, and I'm not sure how many machines there are there compared to what this is going to be, but is bracketed by the ice cream store on one side and the parrot on another and two more bars and a restaurant in the middle. And that's a very vibrant block. And it's a very vibrant block because of that, because of that mix of use and the second point I would make is that this block, this block that, that the Windbag is on is changing with Panhandler now closing, apparently a new bar restaurant may go in there. You know, nothing is static in terms of retail businesses in Helena. On the other hand, I, I definitely sympathize with the, the retail owners who have concerns about this because I think this block, other than the Windbag, has been a different atmosphere and ambiance than the north block, if you will, which has been a little more, and I think by design and by the pandemic changes, a kind of more wide open situation, whereas the south block is much more sedate and quiet, if you will, and suitable to families. So I think that's a factor. I agree with Rebecca's comment about, you know, the, the difference between five machines that they can have by right, sitting in the window versus 10 or 15, really hidden in the back room. It doesn't seem that big to me. And the other thing is I think that a lot of the impacts that we're hearing and the concern, the justifiable concerns from the existing business owners have as much to do with alcohol consumption as they do with gambling. So the fact that there's 10 machines hidden in the back of this room and yet people will be sitting outside on a hot summer day, drinking till late at night. I'm not sure that the casino piece of that's going to really add to that. But I do come back also to the proposed conditional use will not adversely impact or impair the peaceful use of existing property or improvements. I think that includes by definition, both the Last of the Moon folks, and it also includes the Dunphy Block folks who actually, there were mixed comments from that side of the street. But it also includes the, the city's infrastructure that is there to, to steer children or families into that area. So I'm, I'm torn. And at this point, I want to hear what the rest of the discussion is.
A, of my, the top of my notes page says I'm really torn. So I would, I would echo a lot of what Commissioner Wilson just said. I guess the factors that will go into me making a decision. One, do I think personally that Helena has a lot of casinos already? Yes, I do. Do I think, you know, do I agree with some of the commenters that gambling can be a public health concern and public health is in fact, one of the conditions that we, or standards that we have to look at for conditional use permits? I would say yes, I think gambling can be a public health issue. Do I agree that downtown is, is intended to be kind of the face of what we want for the city of Helena? This is, these are the things that we value as a city. Yes, I think that that is what we have in our minds when we think about downtown. However, I guess when I think about it, do I think that the 15 machines hidden in the back of this proposed new bar, which sounds like we'll move forward with or without the machines, will destroy the walking mall or negatively impact downtown? I honestly, I don't think that it will. I think one thing I would say is, you know, yes, we have a lot of discretion in deciding this as the zoning commission. The city code says that conditional use permit may be granted only upon a finding supported by substantial credible evidence. So that, that may suggest that we can say no if we want to. But I guess some of the conversation that has come up tonight, I would agree with some of the commenters on, online that it's a little distasteful to me to be criticizing this proposal based on the perceptions about the type of clientele it may attract. And then I would also echo what Commissioner Wilson just said, is I think a lot of the comments would go just as well with there being a new bar proposed on the walking mall. I think we have some legal vices that, you know, for better or worse are legal in our state. I think of gambling, alcohol, marijuana these days, among others. I think we're here tonight to decide on this particular application and whether it meets the standards in our city code. To me, if we want to protect the walking mall from casinos, period, this is not the way to do it. Deciding no on this conditional use is not the way to do it. I think if we want to, if we or the city want to protect the walking mall from casinos, we could make casino use not permitted in downtown. And I guess what, what gets me to that conclusion is, do the conditions that are proposed by staff get us to the bar of granting a CUP for a casino use? Or is it the gambling in general that we disagree with? And that's, that's what I'm going to be making my decision on tonight with this proposal.
Can you say that last piece again, please?
So I guess for me, it comes down to, do the conditions that are proposed by staff get us to, you know, this proposal meeting the bar of granting a conditional use permit? Or is it the gambling in general? So in, in essence, we would be putting a condition that says no gambling in order for this to be approved. Is there any way that we can apply conditions and approve this conditional use permit if it is gambling? And it, I would say if, if the issue is just gambling in general, then we should have casinos as not permitted in downtown. Because I think like Alyssa said, how would we ever say no to another one if we say yes here? So and yes, if this is granted, it would be then grandfathered. So if we move forward and decide as a city, we don't want casinos in downtown, this would, this actually would be adding one more potentially forever, as long as this property moves forward with the same use. So that's consideration as well.
That assumes you do add a condition that gambling
That assumes you do add a condition that gambling is not allowed on the walking mall, which is not technically on the table at this point.
Correct. Yeah, I'm saying I, yeah, I think
Just to clarify.
Yes, the way to address whether we want casinos in downtown is to make them not permitted
Right.
in downtown.
Right. Not through this. Yes.
I guess my question then is, as I think I've brought up before, how would you move something like that forward for us? Can we move that forward, or do we need to go to the city commission to do something like that?
It's both, since we're advisory. We, as the zoning commission, we are able to amend land uses um and where, in which zones they are permitted or not permitted or conditionally permitted. Um so we have, actually, I think we have a current amendment to the land use table that is still being finalized by the city attorney. Um and so that would be a process that we could revisit potentially um and make changes if we wanted to, and then we would move that on to the city commission for their action.
Clarifying question for the smarter people here, maybe I'm looking around. Voting in favor, or excuse me, voting against the movement that I already made would automatically adopt the conditions that you're proposing, is that accurate?
I was going to ask about your motion as well, because you moved to to not recommend approval.
Right. So the op, if you vote the opposite of my.
I would assume that what, if if your vote, if your motion is voted down, then someone would have to make a motion to approve with the conditions, and that would be how it would move forward.
Okay.
If I may, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another clarifying question. Um as it's been proposed right now, there's the addition to the potential for gaming tables in the future. Is it an option to just take as the applicant, put it forward right now with the slot machines in the back and just say, all right, do that. If you want to add more later, apply again. Is that an option?
Uh absolutely. You um as the zoning commission, this this report is done in your name. This is a rough draft for you. You can change any of the conditions that you want here in this meeting.
Question for staff then. Um if that is, so I guess my assumption was that if it's approved for a casino CUP, that opens up any casino use, but what you're saying is if we approve this particular CUP with conditions that say, for instance, no table games allowed, um that's something we could do.
That's correct. And um just to be clear, since there was some discussion about this moving into the future, all these conditions would remain forever. Um if you uh approved it as it was, it would only ever be the five hundred square feet of of casino space um on into the future.
And and just to clarify, not for you because you know this, but just for the audience, we are advisory, so whatever we do here is a recommendation to the city commission. They're the ones who make the ultimate decision.
And to revise any part of my motion, we'd have to vote the motion down and then put another motion on the table, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Or I suppose you could withdraw your motion, could she, after it's been seconded?
Need a parliamentarian.
That's correct. The motion could be withdrawn.
I'm going to withdraw my motion for the opportunity to include some of what was discussed in a revised motion.
Motion has been withdrawn. Do we have another motion? Is there more? Are there additional considerations that we want to discuss in terms of conditions that maybe would get us to where we want to be? Um and then maybe we would have a motion on a new set of conditions?
So a condition that I would consider then would be a removing number two and somehow articulating that the gaming allowed under this CUP, the windbag would be restricted to machines, and I'm not sure how you define that, because I see it's, they're called gaming machines, and then you have keynote table game. Okay, so what I would want to do would be to restrict it to machines as defined in the code, um and not to allow table games um under the CUP in this space. And I'm not sure how we would phrase that.
Personally, I would rather just restrict any gambling of whatever sort they desire to that five hundred and fifty square foot space in the back. They would like to take the slot machines out and do table games.
Oh, that's fine with me.
Nice.
Yeah.
So that would be potentially scratching number, condition number two altogether and amending condition number one to say, would we say gambling machines and devoted table games, or is gambling a defined gambling itself defined in cities, city code?
You may want to make it as broad as possible, any gambling uh activities as permitted by the term casino.
Where in the material is the definition of casino?
It is on page three of the staff report. Go back one, one more document. It does have, I can just read it.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. So it says casino, an establishment is licensed for on premises consumption of alcoholic beverages, which A is licensed for and has six or more video gaming machines or gambling devices, or B is licensed for and used to conduct any of the following types of gambling, Calcutta pools, live card games, live card game tournaments, and live keynote. So it does sound like gambling is is the term there.
Gambling activity.
Yeah. So potentially amendment to condition number one to say gambling activities be restricted to the gaming area, et cetera, et cetera. Scratch number
And then scratch number two.
Would it be gambling activities or gambling activities as
permitted in the
permitted is under the definition of casino.
Would there be other gambling activities that would be allowed that are not in the definition of casino?
I I think the five gaming machines would still be permitted because that's not under the definition.
Okay.
If that's the case, I mean, wouldn't have been able to restrict them in the first place.
That's correct.
Which is
The five gaming machines are permitted by right.
Which is what my clarifying question was earlier this evening.
Okay, but that's that you just confused me, Lucy. So if we do this, if we move to approve the CUP and allow gaming as defined in uh under the casino definition of the city of code of Helena in the back room, then they're not restricted to five machines. They're, they can do whatever they want in that back room. They can have six or more in the back room. Or they can have table games or whatever they want. Sidebar.
If you limit it to just the definition.
Is licensed for and has six. They're no longer
Six or more. Oh, because it changes the name.
Because it's an and. It's licensed for and has six.
Okay. Okay. If they say as defined by casino.
Was our solution to our quandary?
With the definition of a casino, all of the machines may be restricted to the gaming area. Or all gambling activity may be restricted to the gaming area.
I think if you word it that way, all gambling activity must be restricted to them.
And I do believe that um using the phrasing, gambling activity is your broadest net and not to overstep.
I I guess one other amendment I would like to see in the conditions is to number four, so that we reword that as discussed, so it's not us telling them what they can or can't say on their sign. And maybe the city, someone from the city attorney's office could weigh in before this goes to the city commission. So we don't have to wordsmith that tonight.
Um this has gone through legal review.
Okay. And they determined it was okay to say you cannot take casino.
If there is a problem with that, we will tweak it a little just to clarify that it's to require what the applicant has proposed as far as signage.
In general, I agree with the intent of commission four.
Any other considerations? Or is there a motion?
I'll make. So I'm reluctantly making a motion to approve um for all the reasons I discussed earlier. I I'll make the motion and I'll discuss it, but um I recommend the staff, I rec, excuse me, I need to make a motion that we approve a recommendation to the city commission of resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a casino use in the downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel twenty-two of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Lewis Clark County, Montana. And lot twenty-three A is shown on amended plat of lot twenty-three of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Montana, is shown on the amended plat filed under document number four, four, three, eight, three, oh dash B, records of Lewis Clark County under the fa, or with the following conditions. Number one, and I'll try to say this correctly, all gambling activity as allowed under the casino definition in this Helena city code shall be restricted to the gaming area as defined in the site plan submitted and not visible from the walking mall, save for the existing sportsbook machine located near the entrance, the original windbag saloon. Number two, gaming machine volumes be reduced to a level so that they cannot be heard of standing on the walking mall or on adjacent buildings, if standing two feet away from the wall inside that space. Three, the word casino not be used in signage on the face of the building. Four, a no smoking sign be placed near the entrance of the casino on the outside of the building, and five, all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per section eleven dash three dash five D of the Helena city code.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on that motion?
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Just as to kind of circle back um to my hip being torn about this. I think where I finally came down on this is that, a- and I think the point about the north block of the walking mall is well taken, that you've got all those uses side by side, including a a fairly significant family and children um nexus there, and it seems to work. And in fact, it it's created one of the best spaces in Helena. Um this block will be different. It's not the same block. Um but to me, to kind of balkanize downtown and say that one block of the walking mall can have casinos side by side with children activity, and the next one can't, is taking things a little too too far, I think. So uh because I do not like casinos, I'm reluctant in making this motion, but I I will support it.
Thank you. I guess just to jump in, um I thought about downtown and the walking mall specifically quite a bit on this proposal. Um and I, you know, I've I've lived in Helena since two thousand and eight, and the walking mall has changed a lot over that course of time. Um and I guess when I think about it, uh I I think of looking down the walking mall from the north end. Um and to me, the new businesses that I can think of that have drawn foot traffic, traffic into the walking mall um from Sixth Avenue have been Big Dipper, Ten Mile, Hawthorne, Windbag, Lucas. Um and when I think about those as a group, it seems that the trend is toward restaurants, food, bar type of uses. And to me, I think the south end of the walking mall, I do have to say, I I I don't have young children, so we don't use the walking mall from the playground in that perspective, like we have heard in some of the the comments. However, it does seem to me like the vibrancy that has been drawn into the walking mall um over the the last probably ten or so years has been driven a lot by those food and bar type of uses. Um and in my mind, this does seem consistent with that. Um I appreciate that the that the applicant did withdraw their first application. Um and I guess willingly or not recognized that this was going to be a bigger deal than they had originally envisioned. Um so I appreciate the additional information that was provided to give us more um detail on exactly how we might address the conditions that are in city code. Um I will be supporting this motion as well.
I think Rebecca is the one who has kind of got me on board with these conditions in conditional use. If there is absolutely no condition that could be placed upon except for not gambling, then perhaps their issue is not. This has come up recently in other issues. It's not the application, it's our zoning. Um so I am reluctant on this. I do not think that there should be casinos on the walking mall. Um I think there are a ton of casinos in Helena. I think it does not fit with the downtown plan. Um it's, you know, I think they're, the term that was tried to be used is eclectic. I don't think slot machines are eclectic. I think they're common. You know, I have these personal feelings about it where it does not fit with the downtown plan and what we want to do downtown. But um I also think it's probably not fair to private property owners if we are not making it clear with our zoning what we expect folks to be able to do with their property. And so if that's something we need to talk about more, then that's something we need to talk about more. Um in this case, I I do appreciate that the conditions that were put in place um uh with the new application seem to address the most um the highest level of concern, I think, for folks with the effect it may have on the aesthetic and the feel of the walking mall for folks. And I think the separation of the gambling and the uh the lounge, I think, is key too, where, you know, gambling does have, I think uh it's been shown much fewer benefits um than some of the other vices, at least there is a social aspect that you don't get to sitting at a slot machine. So um anyway, I'm kind of going off here, but uh if that's something we need to talk about another day, that's something we need to talk about another day. I will go ahead and support this.
I do, I guess I'll just jump in. I do want to clarify though, um because you said it was me that convinced you, and I do want to clarify that it it is a conditional use permit, and so the code specifically says it may the code specifically says it may be granted by the city commission only upon a finding. And that suggests that even, even if we make a finding that the standards are met, it may be granted. So you do have discretion in how you vote.
I have nothing else to say to add to what was discussed, except I'm very thankful we got to do this in person. So I'm also thankful you brought your application back.
There any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, we have a motion before us to recommend approval as was stated, and I will call for a vote. All of those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously. And just looking at my packet, this will be heard before the city commission on Monday, May ninth. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks for your time. Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate all of the input. I hope you all have a good night. And with that, we will move on to our next, our next. Sure. Yes, we are going to take just a two minute break and then we will be right back for our next application. For folks online, we're just in extended break, a couple more minutes and we'll be right back. Thank you for bearing with us. Okay, I think we have everyone back in the room, so let's go ahead and move on to the second proposal of the night, item two, which is considering a resolution related to the Helena First Assembly Church of God. So with that, we'll start with a staff presentation.
Thank you Chair Harbridge Commissioners. Just to reintroduce myself, I am Michael Alvarez and I am a planner with the Community Development Department. Item two tonight is Helena First Assembly Church of God. This CUP is for the use how, sorry, worship facility and an R three zone type. So to consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a worship facility in the R three residential zoning district for a property with a legal description of lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in block thirty-three of the Grand Avenue addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, together with the vacated alley adjacent to lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in block thirty-three as vacated by ordinance number twenty-eighty. So this property generally occupies the entirety of the block bordered by Elm Street on the north side, Dodge Avenue on the east side, Cedar Street on the south side, and National Avenue on the west side. The applicant currently has the used type of worship facility. They are not currently operating under a CUP. They currently operate by right. It is the act of expansion that requires this CUP. A worship facility did not originally need a CUP to operate in the R three district, zoning district. Applicant is seeking that conditional use permit. They need to come into conformity because they are expanding. So the way that they are looking to expand, and I hope this is clear coming through, is through an addition that spans between their existing buildings. So they are connecting the two. That connected space, I'll come back to that slide, is largely going to be occupied by a worship space. The, they plan on having a seven hundred seat worship space. So what is a worship facility? That is a building designed and used for public worship by a religious body, group, sect, or organization, but not including church residences and private schools. Want to note here that this facility will have elementary pre-K facilities in it. They would be considered accessory to the worship facility and thus allowed by right. The R three residential district is, provides for the development of mix, of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential uses. Here are some of the renderings. It is my understanding the applicant will go back through these, but it's a, it's a fairly substant, it's a very substantial update of the, the existing facilities. Amenities will include new lighting around and upgrades to the parking lot and pedestrian facilities surrounding the block. Second floor is included here just to highlight that there is going to be some elementary school spaces and a balcony to fill out those seven hundred seats. All right. So to go back over how an evaluation is conducted, it is through title eleven, chapter three, section four. Section A are the standards that need to be met, one and two. Section B are the factors used to determine whether the standards in section A are met. And note, number twelve is a review of one through eleven through the lens of public comment collected. Section C informs us that any adverse impact on the standards of section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. One thing of note for comment and for this project that is highlighted as a as a finding is parking. On-street parking has been identified as an area of concern with this proposal. If granted this variance, the variances associated with this project, and I'll get to those briefly. The facility would maintain the same number of parking spots as it currently has. City code allows worship facilities to use on-street parking for up to ninety percent of their parking requirements, so long as they are connected with pedestrian amenities. It is the intent of city code that, that worship facilities be allowed to use surrounding on-street parking. And Helena First Assembly has made parking agreements with six adjacent businesses for the use of their parking lot. Findings. The first is that a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within one year. This isn't a this condition is derived from the five variances that are associated with this project currently. There is going to be a board of adjustments hearing on those variances on May third. And where they'll be deciding whether they stay or they go, tonight's hearing is a, for the use of worship facility. But let's go over those. The first is a variance to increase the allowable maximum block coverage percentage from forty percent to forty. Sorry, this should actually read forty-four percent maximum is how it's been submitted. A variance from section eleven twenty-four four to increase the minimum distance of a parking space to the trunk of a tree from thirty-five feet to fifty-five feet in the northeast parking lot. A variance from section eleven twenty-four five to eliminate screening on the north side of the northeast parking lot. A variance from section eleven twenty-four five to eliminate screening on the east side of the south parking lot. A variance from section eleven twenty, twenty-two, five to reduce the minimum lot length of a parking spot from twenty to sixteen feet for parking in the northeast lot. That northeast parking lot was originally constructed for compact cars parking, and that has since been removed from our code. We don't have anything in our code for compact cars. Okay, so public notice, this was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and a sign was placed on the premise. Two public comments were collected for this proposal and were sent as an addendum attachment via email. And both of those responses were in opposition, are in opposition to the proposal. Staff's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit with the following conditions, that a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within one year, and all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per section eleven three-nine of the Helena City Code.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions for staff? I have one to start with. So if I understood that correctly, if we were to say vote no and not approve the CUP, they would not be able to expand or remodel this use because it's essentially grandfathered non-conforming use in the R three. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, one more.
So I think you said that they, their, that worship facilities did not previously require a CUP to exist in R three. But they are being required to come into compliance through a CUP because now worship facilities require a CUP. So that, that's because they're remodeling and expanding.
It, it's the act of expansion, correct?
So if we voted no and did not give them a CUP, or the city did not give them a CUP, they would not be able to expand in this location.
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
I'm looking for your email that had those two public comments today. Do you know what time you sent that? Sorry, Dan.
Don't believe it was today.
Maybe you could just summarize their concerns.
I rec, I read them in my recollection. There were large parking and teenagers.
Largely about parking, there was some concerns that it was all, so largely about parking. Especially the larger services, people can be parking around blocking driveways. There was also some concerns about the pre-K. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do this for memory. About balls having gotten loose, car was supposedly damaged from something that had left the grounds of the pre-K. Sorry, on-the-spot summaries are not going to be my, my strength.
Sure, if you, if you have them handy, that would be helpful.
Thanks.
Thanks, April.
This map in this part of the package. I assume that this is what we're talking about. Why is this highlighted to the northeast?
That's also their facility, it's not the subject of this.
Oh, so what's over there?
I believe those are youth facilities. Yeah.
And the zoning. This is what, R3, the residential part?
That's actually R2. So it's R2 to the north, R2 to the west, and then it's B2 to the east and B2 to the south. A lot of I worry, since it's before my time, I worry, I'll butcher the history of this area. But the R3 is meant as a bit of a buffer district there between the commercial, higher intensity uses and the neighborhood.
Thanks.
Are there other questions for staff?
Can you tell me a little more about this? What, if any, the parking situation should be considered here? It sounds like they're expanding their facilities, but the number of parking spaces are staying the same. So how does that work if we're already hearing about complaints about parking? But it sounds like they're not required to add any parking as part of this.
So they will be required in order to get a building permit to show that they have all the required parking necessary for the facility of this size. It's a slightly different part of the process. We asked the applicant to sort of reinforce their parking numbers a little bit and in a way. And one of the ways that they did that was going around to the neighboring businesses and collecting those cross-parking agreements. So they've received those from a half dozen businesses over in those B2 areas. I don't have numbers for you about whether or not they're compliant. I can just say that if they want to build, they will need to be.
That's all I need, thank you. Question about those intersections around the property. So are those four-way stops? Are there stop signs? One of the commenters said that there were accidents on National and Elm. So I'm just curious if there are stop signs on all of those corners, if they're not.
They are uncontrolled.
Okay, thank you.
We have a question, maybe it's directed to the applicant. But is this expansion due to a major growth in the size of the church? Which is going to cause there to be additional attendance and additional parking issues? Or is this just growth creating better space for the existing population of the church?
The applicant is going to be much better prepared to answer that question. It's my understanding that this project has been planned for by First Assembly for quite some time.
Other questions for staff? Okay, well, let's move on. Thank you, Michael. At this time, I would invite the applicant or the representative of the applicant to come forward. You're both willing to, or invited to come forward as well, if you'd like. And again, please introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
My name is Ben Tintinger with Mosaic Architecture, and I'm representing Helen First Assembly of God. I'm going to pull up our site plan. This is correct, and then I've got to share that? Or is it shared? Okay, it's already being shared, so. Okay, let me see if I can get it. All right. Well, thank you for having me up here again. I don't, I gotta say, I can't remember the last time I've done, been in front of the zoning commission. It's got to be way more than 10 years ago. And now I'm here with two completely different projects. So I'm going to put on my halo and angel wings for this presentation. But I, you know, I want to start out by talking about the history of Helena First. They have been on this site for at least 56 years, I believe. 1965 is about when they bought the property in that first. The first phase of the church was built in that mid 60s. We're trying to nail down when it was actually built. Because I think what happens typically with churches is that you get a design and drawings done while you're raising funds, and it just takes a long time to get those funds raised. So I believe the first portion of this church was finished in 1968. Since then, there have been a lot of additions, remodels, new buildings, the kids' building, which is a multipurpose building, was built in the late 70s. And that was when they closed the alley and took over the entire block. So there are multiple facilities with this campus, including the one that we referred to earlier, the youth building that's kitty corner from this property. So Helena First has made a significant investment in this site over the years. And as Michael had indicated earlier, it has always been an R3 zone. And churches used to be allowed by right on an R3. I do know it's come up in the last few years in discussion about that changing. And I believe the city attorney and the planning office has considered that change to go back to allowing churches within and R3 and other residential areas. And of course, when you look around Helena, there's most of our churches are in residential neighborhoods. So it's not without precedent. I'm going to just kind of walk through what our plans are. I wished I'd included some existing photos in this presentation. I neglected to have those. Let's see if it'll go to the full presentation. Didn't you say it was Ctrl-L? Oh, well, I'm not going to worry about that. I'll just kind of go through it here. As you can see, and I don't know if you go by this property very often. You certainly have to when you're going to Rockhand Hardware, which I do a lot. But you'll know that the buildings are dated. They are incredibly well-maintained inside and out. They've made a lot of improvements on the interior and including a really nice coffee shop on the inside. So there's, there is a lot of money that's been invested in this site. The next step of this is to provide this worship space that will house more folks in it. Right now, I believe, and you can correct me, Doug, if the largest worship that they can have right now is about 400 people? Yeah, 300. So and there's multiple services that happen throughout the day on a particular Sunday. The idea is to go to a 700-seat worship space. That would be, if you could put 700 people in one space at one time and fill up every seat, that would be quite a success for Helena First. So the idea is to grow into that. The parking came up earlier about whether we can accommodate that or not. We can accommodate that. We've gone through all the calculations to show that the parking can be accommodated mostly through all the spaces that we have onsite and immediately adjacent to it on the street. So I know the church has they've got their parking agreements with businesses around the area to allow people to have flexibility. But we will be able to meet the parking requirements on this site and immediately adjacent to it. So right now, our plan is to continue that investment in this particular site. And you can see from the site plan, the multiple buildings that happen here. We went through a design process of trying to figure out what the right solution for this was. There was a playground kind of between the sections of church. And you'll see the dash line that actually will be demoed. That's where the administration offices are currently. And so with the addition, with the final solution that we ended up with, we don't lose very many spots of existing parking. Again, this worship space is 700 seats, mostly on the ground floor. We looked at solutions to try and make that happen within the existing building. And but then we would have to put those spaces somewhere else. And eventually came to this solution that new construction for the worship space was going to be best. And then to remodel the rest of the spaces. So you start to see the imagery around the building. In a way, we're trying to keep it affordable, use low-maintenance materials. And essentially, the worship space is a big box. But we're decorating it in a way and landscaping it in a way that will mitigate any concerns about the box. There will be public spaces as well. The coffee shop may be open to the public, but certainly this patio space out front and the adjacent yard space is open to the public. And that's actually part of our reductions in the the parking is by providing a 300-square-foot public area, you're able to redo some of the parking. So again, the idea is to be able to continue in the R3 zone, continue on this site. There have been meetings with the neighborhood. I know Doug went out and canvassed the neighborhood, talked to a lot of residents, and then conducted a meeting at the church. And there were, there were a few folks that showed up to express their concerns. And their concerns are the ones you read there. There are lots of people that, you know, there's youth buildings. So there certainly are teenagers on a Wednesday night church service. So it's a matter of managing the folks that are coming to the church. And I know the church certainly intends to manage that as best that they can. So Doug, do you want to come up and provide any additional comments?
I'm Doug Greenman, 5627 Derby Drive. I'm one of the staff pastors, not the lead pastor. I'm kind of the second fiddle, second chair kind of guy. But, you know, we've, we've really seen it as a privilege and an honor to serve our community since the Great Depression. Yeah, I wish along with the concerns that are being expressed, that you're hearing about, that you could see that or hear the decades of testimonies of lives changed, marriages saved, suicides prevented, relationships restored, just on and on and on and on. Many of the concerns that I've heard from the neighbors are a surprise to me. I've only been here eight years. But in that eight years, I've only really heard of a blocked driveway. But now what's being presented this month goes beyond that, and that concerns me. We want to be good neighbors. We've always thought we had a really great relationship there. So yeah, I've begun those conversations with neighbors, have plans to, actually not just plans, but we've been putting up no parking cones in some of those driveways when we have high-peak volumes. Have begun conversation with a school that uses our parking lot for their bus drop-off. It's not our school, but they use our parking lot to mitigate some concerns that neighbors expressed this month for that. Working with our youth portion isn't part of this application, but it was brought up as as concerns by the neighbors. We're working with our youth leadership to adjust some things there. So, so all that to say, I wish we had the years to work on these things with the neighbors that have come up just recently. Some of the, some of them seem like hyperbole to make a point or to bring forth what the issues are. But I can't really judge that. I do know that what has been stated to us, many of the things are common in any neighborhood with any neighbors of, you know, guests coming by and parking in the driveway inadvertently. And just some of those factors, but that our heart is to continue to have a positive impact. We're committed to that. That's important to us. Growth is hard. We've gone to multiple services to accommodate our growth. There's a negative to having multiple services and that we have more people there and extended amount of time. Our desire through this project would be to limit that amount of time through a larger worship space. But I just appreciate your time tonight, and I know everybody's probably kind of tired, but thank you.
All right, so we'll leave it up to questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we will open the public portion of the hearing. And are there any folks in the room who wish to comment? I only see the applicant and applicant's representative in the room. So are there any folks online, April?
We have Laura Morrow.
I'm not really, is this working?
Yes.
We can hear you. Okay. I'm not really sure what I'm doing here. Oh, now it's doing some other stuff on my iPad. I, you have in front of you my email, I take it?
Yes, the
Okay. So I don't need to repeat all that stuff. Basically, I, oh, I'm sorry, I own the property at 2300 National. It's kitty corner from the, what they call, I don't know what they call it now, but it's the gymnasium building. And you know, one of my biggest concerns is that putting in a playground, and I don't know. I guess I want to know what is R3 exactly? It's, you can put a church there, right? Uh-oh, did I lose you guys?
We're still here, is that?
So can somebody explain to me what the word church means? I mean, when we listen to what the word casino means, there were specific things. And at the beginning of the meeting here, you guys said something about school can be in there by right?
I'm going to, this is Chair Harbage, I'm going to ask Michael, our city planner, to address that question.
Okay.
Certainly, so a worship facility, the definition is, should be up on a worship facility, the definition is, should be up on your iPad screen there. It is a public worship facility.
Oh, but not including private schools, okay.
Correct. So this would be the primary use of that block. In our city code, the other uses of that facility, one of which would be a school, would be considered an accessory use. And accessory uses are allowed by right. So long as they're lesser to the primary use.
I know at one point they were talking about making the gymnasium a school, and I think they've kind of done that in a way. Kindergarten and pre-K, is that what I saw in the picture? It's daycare, it's a big daycare facility, right?
The indoor playground, pre-K, nursery.
Yeah.
And then elementary school.
And, and they're running a school out of that building? I wasn't aware of that, but is that true, that there's a school going on there?
I believe that's something the applicant should speak to.
Yeah, I'm, I'll ask the applicant to address that question.
Not in the sense that school is typically viewed as a school. During our services, we have ministry to all ages. It's not a school per se, it's just during our worship services.
I was just confused by that.
Typically about an hour and 10 minutes.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, I just didn't quite understand that. And, and it moved along pretty fast at the beginning, so I was kind of wondering about things. When you say that you're gonna put additional lighting and stuff back there, is that gonna be a lot of light pollution?
I think you addressed light in the glare and the staff report.
As per city code, all of their lighting fixtures would need to be fully shielded and downward pointing.
I see, okay. Because that's never a nice thing to look out your front window and have a bunch of lights. And that's what basically, you know, that is out the front window for me. You know, I talked about the Wednesday evenings and stuff and the events, and you guys didn't really talk about the color bombing that goes on on Wednesday evenings. Or, you know, the big events in the parking lots where it's all screaming and noise and, and that's supervised. And that goes on. And I guess just expansion is scary because then you get more of the same. So I'm against it. I want to go on the record as being against it.
Thank you.
I guess that's, I mean, you've seen all my reasons and my friends, not my friends, my fellow neighbors have, have written and expressed theirs too, and I know you have all that, so I won't continue with that, but that's, that's where I stand with it. And thank you for explaining things. Well, with R3 zoning, I guess I question, you know, does that, how can you just put a cafe in and a coffee shop? That's not R3.
Laura, just for, I guess, clarification on this, this is a public comment period.
Okay, okay, I can't ask questions. That's why I didn't. I didn't know. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't believe we have the full land use chart for R3 before us, but the, the primary use of this property is for a worship facility. And so like Michael Alvarez said, everything else would be an accessory use and would be permitted.
I see. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
How do I hang up?
Are there other comments online, April?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
And nothing in the chat?
Nothing in the chat, no.
All right, well, we'll give one last call for any public comments. If you are online and you wish to comment on this proposal, please raise your hand.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. All right, I believe that is it for public comments, so I will go ahead and close the public comment period for this proposal. And are there additional questions or considerations?
Chair Harbage, we do have a hand raised at the last minute.
Okay, all right, you didn't miss it, it's okay. We can allow another comment. April, will you call their name?
Kim Giel Klaus. If you're trying to speak, we can't hear you.
Yes, I am trying to speak.
We heard you that time.
Kim, you appear to have muted yourself again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like something, I would like to add something to the conversation. I am a neighboring resident. I live at 2303 National. And I have submitted comments to Pastor Greenman and to Michael Alvarez, so they're aware of my concerns, so I hope you'll consider those completely. But what I would like to just point out is I do have concerns. And primarily that pertains to increased growth of the facility when I feel like they're not doing a good job of managing what they have right now. And I've lived here since 1975. And that doesn't mean I'm tolerant of the conditions, because I'm not. I've had a number of issues and just with this notice of variance, have I had any conversations with the church where I felt like they were interested in knowing how I felt about what they were doing? They've not really addressed any of my problems that have been associated with their fellowship. And I don't feel like they've ever gone beyond with their plans regarding or consideration for any of the residents in the area. So I do, I've had some nice response to my criticism. And that doesn't mean a whole lot when it comes down to reality. So I'd like to know what further develops in terms of plans and modifications. And very concerned about how we're going to support the additional traffic and people, noise, and parking. So I'm not in favor of any playground, and I really question all the different aspects of the businesses that they bring within themselves. So that's all I have to say. I just want more information about how this proceeds.
Great, thank you very much for sharing. Are there any further comments online?
There are no further hands raised.
Okay. We are officially closing the public comment period. Thank you all for being here tonight. And we'll move on to final questions or considerations from the commission. If there are none, I would also entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a conditional use permit to allow some redundancy.
Sorry about that.
To allow a worship facility use in the R3 residential zoning district for a property with a legal description of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and Block 33 of the Grand Avenue addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, together with the vacated alley adjacent to lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and Block 33 is vacated by ordinance number 2080. Property generally occupies the entirety of the block bordered by Elm Street on the north side, Dodge Avenue on the east side, Cedar Street on the south side, and National Avenue on the west side with the following conditions. One, a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within one year. And two, all conditions must be met within one year of the CUP approval as per section 11-3-9 of the Helena City Code.
Well, well done.
I'll second that.
All right. There has been a motion and a second. There are discussion in the commission.
Obviously, already a worship facility, conditional use permit, I think, is essentially just taking into consideration some of these recent changes in zoning. So to me, this makes sense. I'm interested in how they'll do with some of their variances moving forward. But that is not for us to decide, so I think this is our portion. It's pretty easy.
I guess I would add, I'm mindful of the traffic and parking concerns and have some concerns about that. What I heard from the representative of church is that they're gonna address those concerns and I'm confident that they'll be able to mend those fences with the folks who've commented tonight.
Ben, do you have something to add?
Will you, do you mind coming to the microphone?
I do, and I didn't notice this earlier when I read through the conditions, but my, my concern is the permitted building permit within one year. And I know, Nicole, you can appreciate this, that it takes a long time, particularly with a church to raise the money to build a church and then go through that design process of getting it done. Just if we started today with the design work and drawing work, we probably still wouldn't be able to get a building permit in a year. If that's easily extended, that's one thing, but I would think a couple of years would, would definitely help.
Yeah, I have, I also have a question.
Yeah, is that to Michael, I guess, is that allowed under the city code?
Yes. The So condition one there is mostly because we condition our variances that they must obtain a building permit within one year. There were, there are numerous variances attached to that. And I wanted, we wanted to make sure that the CUP acknowledged resolution of those one way or the other to conformity or non-conformity. For but if you're asking if you can recommend two years, certainly.
Yeah, so I think what I would recommend is two years and that between now and the city commission meeting, the staff or city attorney, just make sure that that's a condition that we can, that they can impose if they follow our recommendation.
And how does that work with the variances then? So you mentioned, I think it was May 3rd, or that was the date of the Board of Adjustments, so if
Yeah. Chair Harbage. So, public notice needs to go to the Helena IR tomorrow. I can recommend two years and bring two years as a as a recommendation for those variances to the Board of Adjustments.
Is, is two years enough? There's a lot of work to do.
There is a lot of work to do, and it, and it is very much depending on fundraising and financing and that kind of thing, but I think two years is a good place to get this project moving forward. And then if, if for whatever reason the project needs extension, we'll, we'll approach the city and say we need to get this extended. The variances are gonna need two years too. It's, we can't get into doing all the design work and spend that kind of, of money and time and effort doing that without knowing that we have a variance, so we can't delay the variance. So.
Yep. So, Kim, do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, so I'm, without stating the whole motion again, I will just simply say that with the following conditions, number one, a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within two years.
And does the second stand?
Yeah, second stands.
Is that appropriate? Okay.
Need to change two as well, then? I'm not sure how you can meet that condition within one year of the approval if the condition is for two years.
How do you meet? How do you meet condition one within an amount of time?
So do we want to change both of those to two years?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
So let me amend the motion as follows. It'll, it'll be contingent on the following conditions. One, a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within one year. Two, all conditions, or excuse me, two years. And two, all conditions must be met within two years of CUP approval as per section 1139 of the Helena City Code.
Okay, now I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I guess I would say, you know, I think that we did hear some concerns through the, a couple of comments that we received, and in my opinion, it sounds as though the church is, is willing to address those. I think that the plans were put forward in a, in a manner that was considerate of the fact that they are located in a neighborhood. They've been there for a long time, and I believe you, when you say that you have the neighborhood's best interests in mind. And I agree with what was said earlier, just, you know, this has been a worship facility use for a long time. And just because there were changes to the zoning code, that's kind of how we ended up here. I do, I guess, have, have some mild concerns about the fact that there may be additional traffic kind of all at one time instead of over the course of multiple services. And the fact that those intersections are uncontrolled at this point, but I guess that would be a question for the city and not, not these folks in the room probably, but city streets, thinking about what the traffic is like on those roads and in those intersections. So that's something that the commission might be able to consider, but any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously, and this one, it sounds like has a Board of Adjustments hearing on May 3rd. And then will be heard before the city commission on May 9th. And thank you very much, everyone, applicant and also commenters who were with us tonight. You sat through a lot, so thank you, we appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on along our agenda. It looks like next on the agenda is old business, and there is none to cover tonight. There is also no new business on the agenda that has been noticed, so we will move on to general public comment. Is there any general public comment tonight? You have comments online, please raise your hand. It doesn't look like there is any general public comment, so we will move on to member communications or proposals for the next agenda. And I was, I was getting some advice from Lucy earlier about what this section of the agenda means, since it's a new addition, but I do think that it sounds like we have several kind of backlog items for discussion as far as the zoning commission goes. Just the ones on, on my radar that I would mention that we'd like to talk about are consideration of recreational marijuana and how that zoning should work in the city. I believe we want to take a look at where residential uses are allowed, which zones those are allowed in. And we had a recent hearing where we, I think it was B2. There was a B2 annexation or pre-zoning where residential was allowed, and we wanted to take a look at that. It sounds like they're also still working on updating the land use table with some of the revisions we've made previously. We will likely also have We will likely also have to revisit signs in the city. And that would be specifically things like height, size, type of sign, lighting, all of those things that are legal for us to consider. I believe after following the conversation tonight, we may want to take a look at casino uses across the city and maybe we want to be more proactive about applying more limitations on where casino uses might be allowed instead of waiting for someone to apply for a CUP. And then a couple that, well, maybe, maybe just one that I would like to consider would be to have a conversation about design standards and how we might be able to get some, get some movement in that direction for the city of Helena. And I would be interested in hearing from some of our other Montana cities that have something in place already. Are there, are there other items?
If we dropped the gateway study or whatever we were doing, the gateway zoning or overlay.
I believe that has been dropped for Ellie Ray. Yeah.
Yeah.
The Capitol Hill.
Yeah, it died because the building permits have been applied for.
Yeah.
So I, I do still like the idea of having an entryway corridor overlay.
Yeah.
Cause we had talked about, is that something we could apply there and then also apply in different parts of town just as they redevelop? So we might want to revisit that when we have time.
Proactive rather than reactive.
I, I think that was the issue with the, the overlay as it was being discussed. It was too late because building permits were already coming in for those buildings. So.
And hopefully we have a new director in like a week.
Yeah.
We'll have a brand new bunch of priorities and desires to go over things with you.
Okay. Hopefully that includes casinos. Other items?
Like these items placed on new business for the next meeting? So that you can discuss that more thoroughly, or is there one or two in particular?
It, yeah. Work session. It feels to me like we need a work session. And maybe that's once we get a new director in place. We should have a work session where we have a meet and greet and talk through what we want on our calendar.
I know Sharon had wanted to do a work session about recreational marijuana before she retired. So that's definitely something that I think should be looked into and we'll, we'll keep it on.
Okay. The one thing I do think we need on the agenda under new business next time is a vote on vice chair.
And to let you know, the clerk's office is advertising for the vacant position.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. So I won't be here on May 10th.
Okay. Thank you.
Not, not because I don't want to be here for that vote, but.
Does that mean we don't? Does that mean we don't have quorum then?
Will you be here?
Yeah, I'll be. I think so. I'm pretty sure.
I think I'll be here as well. So we would have three.
So three is all we need for quorum. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Next up is meetings of interest or announcements. And it looks like our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 10th, as we just discussed. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda and it is almost nine o'clock. So this meeting is adjourned. Thanks all.
Thank you.